Thank you. Welcome all, I'll call this meeting to order, thank you for your attendance. This is the Infrastructure Services Committee, starting off no public forum, I understand. Apologies, we have the Mayor, Lee Vandervass, Hilary Calvert, Andrew Noon, and Hawkins, Aaron, otherwise, I'll move those, seconded, thank you, Kristains. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, thank you. Confirmation of the agenda, I'll just note that we've got one thing missing under 11, and that's matters for notification for the Chair, I'll add that in there. Apart from that, I'll move the confirmation of the agenda, seconded, Mike Lord. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, thank you. Declaration of interest, opportunity now to say, or during the discussion, to note your interest. Onto item five, thank you for waiting, gentlemen. Ruth, are you standing back, thank you. Hello. Nice to have you here. Fred Hollows, what a nice thing to do. Born in Dunedin? Lived in North East Bailey?
Yes.
Have I jumped on, Bar Street, oh Bar Street. Watty Fox, sorry, Watty Fox as well, okay. What would you like to say, anything about that?
It's exactly this one, I'm a little bored. Move tranctional area, the only potential problem is fox, we have two foxes, three, but I think on balance it's probably a really good name.
Move recommendation, seconded, councillor McTavish. Any discussion? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Well you'd like to move Fred Hollows, I think it's the second, thank you. Any comments?
I have been in discussions with the Fred Hollows fanbase, who are still in contact with the family, the family are in Australia, they have said there are already a number of roads named after Fred in Australia, this will be the first in New Zealand.
Excellent.
And they're quite keen to make a bit of a fuss about it.
Excellent, so when the sign goes up, we'd like to...
They would like to have a wee ribbon-cutting ceremony?
Excellent, I think it's a fantastic idea, I think it's really nice to acknowledge his contribution to science and medicine, trained in Dunedin, I just look forward to one day there being a Mackindoy, for the same reasons.
Working on it.
Another eminently sensible name, very good, so move seconded, any discussion? All in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against, carried, thank you. Indeed, indeed, I'm sure that Melbourne Street will think that that's significantly significant. Very good. Michael, welcome, again sorry to keep you waiting, blame the previous Chair.
Thank you.
Would you like to, this is 17 Mahino Street, proposed road stopping.
Do your copies have a colour?
Yes.
Colour maps, good, that's good, I don't really have anything else to add to the report, so I guess, you know.
Happy to move here, any questions? Seconded? Oh sorry, I can't see with the screen, apologies. Any comments, do you want to talk to the motion? Any, any discussion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, take that as credit for your report, writing. Resolution to stop portion of Cliffs Road Dunedin, that's you again, Michael?
Yep, so this is the second report, we was out for public consultation, and we've had no, no objections to the proposal, and it can proceed.
Mover, thank you, Michael, and Doug. Any questions or discussion? All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, thank you. Item nine, proposed road stopping 82 Cliffs Road.
That's what we've just done.
Oh sorry, that's the previous one, apologies, yeah. Solid Waste Activity Report, ended 30th of March 2016. Thank you, Michael. Catherine, hello.
Councillor, if I may, through the Chair, so as you'll notice from the previous agenda and this agenda and tomorrow's CNE agenda, these are the new format, non-financial performance reports, you will also note that the measures and types of measures that we capture do vary, and that does reflect the relative maturity of the different operating groups, and also the variety in ways that we collect that data at the moment. Please be assured that these are very much a work in progress, and we do want to shift them away from, you know, pure volume to more, you know, efficiency and cost-based and other, other measures that do show you how well, the value for money that these, our services do deliver, but also these will be the primary mechanism for us to be able to give you greater visibility on a more regular basis of what's going on from a day-to-day basis across the organisation, so we welcome your feedback, thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, have you anything you'd like to add to that, on solid waste?
Certainly the measures are something that we're having a good look at now, so the ones that we have had in place have been in place for a while, we get some good value out of some of them, and others you wonder why we're even metering them, and I think we could probably be telling a better story about what we do if we get some other measures in place.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
It varies really from graph to graph, but there are some things where I think it would be really helpful to be able to look more at a moving average over time, because I think particularly things like diverted material and things like that, where you can have short-term market fluctuations that can make something look well out of whack, but in fact the overall trend may well be positive or negative, but it's hard to tell from that, so this would be an example for me where that would be helpful, there are probably a number of others, and I guess that that'll start to settle down over time, and it's, I'm just really pleased to see this kind of reporting started, so it's not a criticism, let's just have a look at where we can improve it as we go along.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor McTavish.
Thanks, Catherine. My question relates, and I think we saw this graph, this contamination graph, maybe at annual plan time, and I think, at the time I asked the question, but you weren't here, around the contamination rates of this financial year. Now, my eyes aren't great at a graph this size, but it seemed to me that the contamination rate appears higher this financial year, is that the case, and if so, do we have any sense of why?
Yes, it is the case, and we do know why, or we have a good sense of why, the material recovery facility has gone through a couple of bailing contractors in the last few years, it probably wasn't operating at the cleanest sort of salt line previously, they've got a lot tougher, so the recycling actually coming out the other end is a lot cleaner, but as a result we're getting more, what looks like to be more contamination, it's just cleaner recycling, but we are still very focused on getting some communications out and refreshing our communications around recycling from the curbside end, to let people know, you know, what doesn't go into a bin, and we're working on that at the moment as well.
Okay, thank you. I guess the other question that I had, and maybe this is more for you, Ruth, is around, so we have our Waste Management Minimization Plan, and then we have this reporting, how is it thought that that might work together over time, are we likely to get an annual report back against the plan as well as this reporting, or is it anticipated that this reporting will, over time, be more tightly connected to the plan itself?
Yes, it's one point that I missed off, my entry spiel was about, we would like to incorporate all the action plans that are being, being worked on, so that you'll see, rather than actually within the report, more, an appendix that will have a summary of the actions or the objectives and the progress against them, these reports will come to the committee on a quarterly basis, and that's how we feel is probably the best way to amalgamate them at the moment.
Any further questions? Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, just a question that's about one of the bullet points on page 34, which are the fifth one, about needles and associated. I recall some material I read about a very large problem in Vancouver prior for the, for the wait, for the Dusties, because of needles being disposed on in the street and in bags, do we have an issue of that kind, or is the needle exchange, the way the needle exchanges work, managing that?
We have had an issue with it, and we have been working towards resolving that issue, so the needle exchanges is very good for intravenous drug users, they'll take the needles back, but what we're seeing more commonly is medicines that are being dispensed by needles now, and that to get a needle bucket costs a lot of money, the service is quite expensive, we've been working very closely with the Southern DHB, and we're just rolling out with them, they're financing it, a free needle collection through pharmacies throughout Otago, so half the pharmacies have already taken it up, and we're working on some communications now to be given out to patients, so it certainly takes away the temptation of putting it in your refuse bag or your recycling bin, because it takes the cost out of the equation.
That's good, thank you.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone wish to move? Moved there, seconded councillor Hall. Any discussion, but thank you very much for a great result, a great start to reporting on this. All in favour, please say aye. Against, carried, thank you. Now can I turn to the right heading? Transport? Quarterly report, do you want to talk to that? You've just got you. Thank you, Catherine. Do you want to talk to it first?
No, I'm here to take questions.
Well, yeah, point 18, bullet point 18 on page 40, it says about the LED streetlights, the business case for the transition etc, and the Lynn Street demonstration site in places, that already happened, if they've got lights in place that we can go and visit. Since Christmas, yeah.
Andrew, councillor Wiley?
Yeah, to a, reseal program delivered $560,000 under budget due to favorable pricing, is that money being rolled over to be spent on more resealing, or is it just going back into the pool?
No, it will be, it was already expected when the forecast was done before, to the end of 30 June, so no, there won't be, won't be a carryover.
Okay, so considering the community board spoke on improved road conditions and sealing, is there anything planned for that to take place?
Yes, so the metling program is currently being rolled out at the moment, and we are meeting with community board members and councillor Noon to talk about what are some options for different parts of unsealed roads, that, corners, heavy vehicles, etc, and we had the metling program for this year validated by a third party, so we're very conscious of the focus on the sealing and looking at different options, and that will very much be a focus of going into the new contracts as well.
Is the pricing still down, or is it to come back up? And so will we, what's budgeted for the financial year 16, 17, are we saying X kilometres is what we've budgeted to do versus the pricing being down, we can actually do a little bit more?
The reseals and the metling are different, and are budgeted differently, so at the moment the budget estimates for the maintenance for the, for the metling program, the program is still yet to be agreed, but on the reseals for the next financial year, there is a program that has been agreed, and in previous years where we've actually gone out to the market a number of times with small packages, wherein the feedback has been that they'd rather have one package and get better value for money, and we'll be doing that early in the new financial year.
Okay, when I look at paragraph 10, can you elaborate on that, please?
As you're aware, there has been quite a lot of work done on the current maintenance contracts, and also in setting up for the new ones, so what we discovered was that when we started looking into the requests and their performance against, against timeframes, that there was an extensive backlog, at one stage we had backlog equivalent to 173 years, but that was actually more of a result of not that things weren't getting done, but actually that data wasn't being loaded in properly, it wasn't being managed, and things weren't being closed off properly, so there has been a significant focus on that, and you can see that in the differing results, but there will be a far greater focus on the customer requests. One thing I will note is that these are just the requests that go through the roading system, and are not a full picture of all the customer requests we have in transport, so at the moment all the safety requests are held separately, and we're looking at how we can be reporting on those as well, so these are just the ones that go to our, that need a maintenance response.
Okay, thank you, and on page 42, developing options of NZTA to progress a strategic cycle network, is there a plan here, are you talking about the whole network, are we talking the one-way system, are we talking the city network?
So these are the projects within the council's approved strategic cycle network, and we're looking at how we can better work with the New Zealand Transport Agency, whether it be shared procurement, or how we can procure resource so that we can actually move these things forward at a far more, at a greater pace and more robustly, and obviously there have been challenges with cycleway delivery, you know, across the country, and the New Zealand Transport Agency is acknowledging its role in that and how it can assist councils, so that's, that's where that's at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, councillor McTavish? Oh sorry, councillor Staines, I had first, apologies, and then apologies.
Ruth, I was just interested on paragraph 15, the risk chart there, there'd been two instances in Islington Street, were they at the same time, or were they the same contractor? Because it seems that whoever it was didn't listen the first time, if it was two different instances.
I don't have that detail to hand, but from memory, they were actually separate contractors, and in separate, separate instances.
So is this, is it common for contractors not to put out their signs, the safety signs that they require, and the traffic management side of it, or is it...
It's not that common, as you can see across, across the timeframe, we just had a particularly, obviously, not a great, great month in February. And this is also, this new, new reporting, so this has been coming through in management reporting for a while now, and this is also third party, as well as councillor's own contractors, so obviously we're particularly interested in our own contractors, although obviously we're interested in the safety across, across the city, but this has given us a much stronger basis to have very strong discussions with our contractors on, and we are looking at improving their health and safety reporting.
That's good, thank you.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you. Couple of questions, Ruth, the capital program, obviously well behind schedule, and that has been flagged up, I guess in regular financial reporting, but I guess this gives us a bit more detail about the areas in which we're not seeing any movement, the peninsula works, is that all Turnbull, Turnbull's Bay, right, just two different budget lines, in terms of, sorry, the peninsula is the Turnbull's Bay, and then there's the widening, oh I see, yeah, great, thank you, that, we're not going to see a whole load of movement on that between now and year-end, is that right?
In the, in the financial year-end, no, but as mentioned in the report, we're just going through procuring the design consultants at the, at the moment, this is one where we've also been working very closely with the NZTA, so their specialist procurement people have been working with us, and we are using one of their senior experienced project managers who's delivered a number of projects from them around, around the city, so that we can set up a sustainable model that can just, that can roll the project out, and we really just wanted to get it right before we started it.
Thank you.
We're conscious of the timeframe, and that we committed to an accelerated timeframe, and we can't, and we believe that we can, we can still do that, there are, in the project itself, there are still, I think, five points around, along the peninsula where there is no design, so the detailed design will progress for the areas that are consented, and in parallel design options for those remaining five will be complete.
So one of the things which, I think last time this came in front of council, we discussed, and I think there is a council motion that endorses it, as an advisory group to advise on ecological and landscape issues, how is that being tied into both the consented works, which we did not have that overview factored into it, and the future design works in those five areas?
Yes, so the project manager, and obviously we're very aware of the need for the environmental advisory group, the plan is to get the consulting team on board, and then engage with the, or establish and engage with the advisory group, so that we've actually got the team, the team on board, we did debate getting the project manager to kick that off, but I think it would be better to have the team that they're going to be working with, so that you'll see that, that'll happen in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the cycle network issues, what engagement with stakeholders will we be seeing over the next month or so around those timeframes, so stakeholders like Spokes, when might they expect to have council staff engage with them directly on timetables and other issues?
So definitely within the next couple of weeks, so we are working through, we've just actually got an additional resource in our communications team, conscious that there are a lot of demands on our communications team, and our, and our department puts a lot of demands on them, so we are working over this week on the communications plan, particularly obviously with the remediation of Portobello Road, and working through the timeframes, the next steps for key projects, but also in parallel with the New Zealand Transport Agency.
Thank you, and one final question, just again coming back to the key capital projects, are there any of these budget lines that we might expect to see significant movement on between now and the end of the financial year, or is it likely that these budgets will remain as underspent as it is signaled?
Bearing in mind these are only till the end of March.
Yes.
I can't give you an exact, an exact figure, but I can actually provide an update to forecast to the end of June, outside of this meeting.
That'd be great, cheers.
No, any other questions? I've just got a couple, the first one is about the resealing, just in light of the South Dunedin report, and the issues of the height of the road, when we do further resealing, will that, what process are we going through to analyse whether a simple resealing over, or a resealing, taking the old seal off is appropriate, and the cost implications for that?
I think it's, it's fair to say that we, the transport team working a lot more closely with the water and waste team and the asset planning space, and we're currently investing in, in expanding the asset planning team in transport, will mean that those discussions are actually going to, will be had, and that analysis will be done.
Thank you, and the only other one, I think comparatively, the worst performing, although that's a very loose term, on key capital projects has been footpath resurfacing, and I'm just intrigued as to how that's come about, is it that we didn't need to do the footpath resurfacing, or is it that there is a substantial amount of work that we're waiting for other projects to align with?
No, that is a budget line that we will have spent the majority of, if not all, by the end of 30th of June, at this, at this time the contract's on, you've recently...
Anyone wish to move the report? Thank you, councillor McTavish, councillor Hall, any further discussion? Put the motion, all in favour, please say yes, aye. Against, carried, thank you, and taking us to item 11, Three Waters Activity Report for the quarter ended the 30th of March, why not 31st? 31st of March, perhaps? Sorry not to pick that up early, do you want to speak to this?
And I apologize, under normal circumstances, I would have had Maren here, however she's in contract negotiations this afternoon, and they haven't concluded yet, and Laura has gone home, gone home sick, so if there are any questions that I can't answer, or I answer particularly badly, I will provide information after the meeting.
Any questions? And councillor Wiley?
Ruth, in the executive summary, 2.3, Tahuna Biosolids Project, what is actually happening there, because that seems to be ongoing by quite a bit?
So that project is in its final stages, so the trials of the incinerator, and then its complete refurbishment will go and dictate the last stage of that, there was a budget link for about $3.2 million, of which only about $800,000 is now required, and the remainder has been allocated to other new capitals, so that project is almost complete.
Okay, getting into your major initiatives, point 23, or paragraph 23, Muswellborough Pumping Station, can you elaborate on that one, please?
Sure, so this is nothing to do with the actual pump station itself, this is actually just the, the building that encloses it, given its, its age, we've had, it's an earthquake-prone building, and given the site, we have a significant amount of challenge in effectively dismantling the whole building and the roof, and rebuilding it around the pump, etc, so the team have been working, working through that.
Oh, okay, is there any work to be done on the pump station itself?
No, it's purely the building.
Okay. Portobello, sorry, paragraph 32, Portobello Road Stormwater Pump Station screen, so the only work that'd been done at the moment is, I thought they actually were doing, already doing some screen work there, or can you elaborate what the tender will be going out to, say, going out to market?
Yes, so the, the design has been done, and, and the tender, the tender is out, with, and should be closing, I think in the middle, in the middle of June.
Okay, and that was, so it was easier to monitor and clean, or so it wouldn't block as quickly?
So it's a complete, it is a complete replacement of the screen, so yes, there are, there have been additional programmed cleans around rain events, we've had a couple obviously in the last few weeks that have, that we've been able to, to get prepared for, but yes, this will remove any need for, certainly any health and safety risk, and make it a lot, a lot simpler to, to clear and to keep clear.
Okay. Oh, can I ask a question on that? I think that came through the flood report about some monitoring behind the screen of when the levels come up, that is also part of this as well?
Yes, yes it is, so that's the, in terms of the, the system and the pumps coming online, making sure that it's picking up at the right point in the system.
And automating the notifications.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I asked this question, I guess back in April, I think it was, and I didn't see anything in relation to work for it, are, are the pipes going to be thoroughly, or have they been thoroughly checked all the way through, because I understood when Laura answered... Because I understood when Laura answered the question, she goes, they hadn't.
No, the answer that Laura gave was that we did our standard checking, which was putting, going down when they lift the manholes and check them. However, that through our discussions with some people from the Southend Eden Action Group, one of them who was previously involved in the system was talking to us about a couple of examples that they had found. So where they had cavitation around, although it looked clear, it was in the pipes. So the plan is to get the pipes all cambered in addition to the standard checks.
Timeframe for that to happen?
It will happen in the coming year, across the next year.
Okay.
But I should say that we have no, there has been no cause from the standard checks for us to think that we need to do the camera checking, that it's just an added precaution.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone wish to move that report? Thank you, Mike. Seconded, thank you, Chris. All in favour, please say aye. Against carried. That takes us to matters of notification for the chair. I've got one from councillor Benson-Pope, which we may be able to get resolved immediately if Ruth has been pre-warned.
Yes, please. This is a small matter, but one I think that needs attention. And I have brought you a photograph. Residents of and visitors to Dunedin's favoured eastern suburbs will have noticed the reemergence of the problem of damage to Portsmouth Drive median. Now, when it's dry, you can see that vehicles have been driving over it, but it doesn't do damage. The vehicles are obviously driving into the opposing traffic lanes. I don't know whether there are people there or not. And I suspect that it's a small number of dipsticks. This may be...
Is that a technical term?
They don't, they're not resident in the peninsula or that side of the city. But I just think we need to address the issue. Mr Saunders is laughing because he's been there a year ago with me on a personally chauffeured visit. And I think they have to be sensible, easy, low-cost, within addressing budget solutions to stop this loopy behaviour. These people were probably the people who drew, I don't doubt, who drove over the trees on several occasions that were planted there as well. But I think if you look at the traffic, the marks, there's been a lot of it going on lately, and it's very visible. It's the whole length of the median of Portsmouth Drive, although this part outside the Ega Centre is much worse at the moment. And so really, I'd like staff to have a look at it, come up with ways of, I think bluestones are a good way, but plantings will be good as well. There must be ways of stopping vehicles, actually. It's not, I stress, not the people who are stupidly crossing the median to get into placemakers or the glass place metro. This is random hooning, which I think should be discouraged. If we're going to have hooning, it should be focused hooning.
Thank you. That's made for the chair. This isn't debate.
And I'd like a report on it.
No, no, we may have a comment now, or just...
I understand we have actually prepared a plan. It's obviously taken us longer than we would have liked with a few other things on the go, but we will make sure that that gets to you and that we expedite that.
Okay. Does anyone, sorry, this is, okay, is yours notification for the chair? Or is it debate on this?
Yeah, I just don't want to start going, here's the plan, councillor, talking about bluestone or something like that. I would be absolutely against that, so...
Thank you for noting that, for the chair. Okay, thank you. I'm going to come to you, Doug, you've got other matters, or you want to talk to this one?
Yeah, I just note that's either been taken out the driver's side window...
Illegally parked, I didn't want to go there.
Or by a car stationary on that lane.
He was a passenger in the backseat.
I actually parked in the Ega Centre cover and stood on the footpath and used the zoom on the...
Thanks for alleviating that concern.
And there are lots of passing by.
Councillor Hall. Councillor Hall.
Actually, someone dropped, someone lost control and slid across. Had four wheel marks on the nature, it was a big car.
Thank you. Okay, could I, Doug, you had some other matters for notification for the chair? Doug? Doug? So councillor Hall, you had two matters for notification to the chair that you raised with me? You wanted to know about the two-car slip, what the progress was with that?
Is the two-car slip, is that a tender?
Yes, it is, and the tender closes on Monday, the 13th of June.
Okay, and so we'll have a progress report on that, no doubt, after that. And the other matter was...
The St. Clair handrail, that, and I think the query was whether it's included in maintenance. So this is the replacement of all the rusting and falling apart handrail. The line in the report, I apologise, is confusing. A final decision on doing that was postponed until we had the bigger picture of what it is that we're doing in that area and with that wall. So we, and that work hasn't progressed as fast as we liked it, with the focus being on the ocean beach remediation. So the handrail is currently not planned to be changed this month.
Is it rusting?
Yes, it's just disintegrating.
It was brought to the, I think, on the sandblaster. In the contract, it had to be washed down, it'd be so many weeks at once. And I actually asked the question here, I just told you it was being washed down, it was a bit, it shouldn't be rusting.
Yes, the replacement is also actually part of the building consent requirements.
Do you want to comment on that, Richard? No, thank you. That, any other notification for the chair or extended debate thereof? Councillor McTavish.
Well, I think we're going to non-public, so I can do it non-public, but I'm just, as chair of tomorrow's CNE, I've had three councillors apologise in the last 24 hours. So if any other councillors want to apologise, it would be really great to have that now. So that we can make alternative plans.
Because we're very short of a quorum.
We will be short of quorum.
Thank you. Noted. I will now move, we go into non-public, for matters of contingency elders and as per the order papers. Seconded, thank you councillor Staines. All in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against carried. Thank you.